Thank you, Tuesday, August the 8th, 2023. We're going to call the role Vice Mayor.
Present.
Alderman Blanton.
Here.
Alderman Hansen.
Here.
Alderman Peterson.
Here.
Alderman Berger.
Present.
Alderman Brown.
Present.
Alderman Potts.
Present.
Alderman Baggett.
Present.
And the mayor is here also. Next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizen comments. I do have citizen comments, but they're for one of the items that are already on the agenda. Seeing none, I do know that Mr. Stuckey has an introduction he wants to make.
I want to make a quick introduction to the board and to our community of a new team member we have with us. Ahil Rajpari is our new management fellow. This is a program we started about four or five years ago, and Ahil is a recent Masters of Public Administration graduate from the University of Alabama at Birmingham, and he's just joined us a couple of weeks ago, and so he'll be with us at least the next 12 months, working on lots of projects through administration, through our budget and finance area, through human resources, and whatever else comes up that a bright, talented person new to our organization can help contribute to. So we're thrilled to have Ahil with us, and welcome aboard.
He'll be busy. I like that. The next item on the agenda is discussion regarding Ethics Commission findings and recommendations regarding Alderman Gabriel Hansen.
I'm going to ask Shawna to join us and also Gail Ashworth. This is following of the process in terms of the ethics ordinance and the process that you have laid out, which also happens to be in parallel with the state model ordinance related to ethics in this process. It's a little bit unique in terms of like my role and Shawna's role in that we were there to help assist in process, but really the Ethics Commission itself brought on board outside counsel to help assist them directly, to provide guidance, legal advice, et cetera, because of the nature of that interaction. So they have gone through their process, deemed that a review was warranted, held the public hearing, collected testimony, got public comment and responses related to all that, and has made a determination report in terms of their findings and a recommendation. Our intent is to bring that to the board on the 22nd, which will include a report from the Ethics Commission and their recommendation in a more formal sense, as well as the transcript of those proceedings as well. And of course, the video of that commission meeting and public hearing is available to you on the city's various media platforms. So that is kind of the setup today is to treat it like a typical item in terms of a work session discussion of where we are, answer questions the board may have, with the thought that at the 22nd, we would bring an item forward for board action. But tonight, we want to follow your guidance and answer any questions you have. I'll turn it over to Shawna, and then she can introduce Gail.
As you guys probably know, under the ethics ordinance, I am the ethics officer. But sometimes I'm too close to the board, and in this situation, I am. I actually am counsel to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen, so I do meet with you individually and give you guidance. So in that situation, the ethics code allows for me to hire outside counsel who would then take the matter on and advise Ethics Commission, which I have done. And I'm going to introduce you to Gail Ashworth. Gail provided counsel to the Ethics Commission and is drafting the findings of fact and conclusions of law as we speak. Gail?
Thank you, Shawna. Yes, just to echo what's been said, the public hearing was on the 27th. The purpose of the public hearing was to consider the complaints that had been received, which was done, and the Ethics Commission heard from three complainants that day. Three of the complaints that had been received did not appear, so those were stricken. A fourth was there but did not want to proceed, so that one was stricken. But three complainants did appear and presented their complaints regarding Alderman Hansen. After hearing from the three complainants, there was witness testimony. One of the complainants had a witness present, and then following the procedures, it was open to the public who wanted to speak, and the Ethics Commission heard from four members of the public that day as well. So after hearing from the complainants, the witness, and the four members of the public who spoke at the public hearing, the Ethics Commission deliberated in an open session, public session, to consider the complaints, the testimony, and the statements of the witnesses and the documents, as well as the public members and the argument of Alderman Hansen's attorney. Alderman Hansen did not appear but was represented by counsel. The Ethics Commission did make determinations that two violations of the Franklin Municipal Code occurred after considering specific substantiated evidence from credible sources, which is the standard for the Ethics Commission, to support reasonable belief that there were violations. So the two code violations that were found were Franklin Municipal Code 1-805-1 and Franklin Municipal Code 1-808-2. The Ethics Commission further found that censure was appropriate for these violations, and the Ethics Commission recommended that the City of Franklin, Board of Mayor, and Aldermen determine the appropriate censure. So that will be forwarded to you by a written decision, which is required by the process, and the written decision is in process. It will include findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the reasons for the decision. And the Ethics Commission has not finalized that, but will do so in that document. That written decision will be presented to you at the meeting on the 22nd, I believe, on that agenda.
And the Ethics Commission has scheduled a meeting for August 14th to meet together to review the report and discuss their final report and, I believe, the transcript from the hearing.
Yes.
So that'll be part of bringing closure and bringing something for the board to consider.
Yeah, the transcript has attached to it the record, all the documents that were presented, so that will be a part of the written decision.
Okay, we need to hear from the board, what their feeling is. Does this move on to a resolution that the board would consider in the future, or would you like to gather your thoughts? I have four people that would like to speak, and I was going to allow them two minutes apiece. So if that's... Following people, please line up. Walter Simmons, Peggy Kingsbury, Rod Berger, and Emily Jenkins. You have two minutes each.
I'm Walter Simmons, Pastor Walter Simmons, CEO, President and Founder of the Franklin Justice and Equity Coalition. I am the one that the email was sent about when we were called a radical, right-wing Black Lives Matter organization, all which is untrue to even understand. I just want to stay with radical just for one moment. This Saturday, we will host a back-to-school where we will give out gift cards for school clothes, haircuts, and other things for our community. Other than that, we only don't do Juneteenth. We also do MLK celebrations. We also do back-to-school Black Lives, I mean, Black History. To say that we are a radical organization is a slap in the face to our organization. Ms. Hansen says that we have created a conflict, but last year at Juneteenth, some real radical people showed up in downtown Franklin, and Ms. Hansen did not have any gall to say anything about White Lives Matter. But yet, she has created conflict in African-American community with her email and her comments. Behind her comments, we've lost numerous sponsors, friends, and partners, some churches, some corporations, and some other nonprofit organizations. I'm asking this Board of Aldermen, as I said before, not to censure Ms. in a way to put her off. Her constituents voted for her. She should be here. But what should not happen is that when we come in and put a permit like everyone else that we go through what we went through in 2022, when Juneteenth was pulled, and then we were told we need a Black Committee, like we are not Black enough with people who can do what we need to do, it was seconded by you, Alderman Brown, and then she gave us a lecture. That should not happen when we do our permits. This year, she even in a work session in April, pulled and asked us who our sponsors were. Maybe the issue is that Alderman Hansen sent the email, but she still voted for the Juneteenth Festival unanimously by the Franklin Justice and Equity Coalition in 2022 and 2023. I am Walter Simmons. I am the founder of the FJEC, and we have not taken anything from anyone. We've obeyed every law, and we put on a wonderful event every year. Ms. Hansen deserved to stay because her constituents voted her in. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. The Ethics Commission carefully considered the complaints and citizen comments regarding Alderman Hansen's violation of the city's Code of Ethics. I'm sorry, Peggy Kingsbury. The Commission decided by unanimous vote that Alderman Hansen did violate the codes, and they unanimously recommended censure. At a minimum, I request a publicized censure of Alderman Hansen. When a member of our U.S. Congress is censured, they are removed from committee chairmanships. I could not locate committee leadership roles on our city website, but if Alderman Hansen holds such positions, these should be revoked. Additionally, I'm requesting her removal from the two committees she serves, which are the Beer Board and the Capital Investment Committee. Further, I request Alderman Hansen's membership and representation of the City of Franklin in the National League of Cities be revoked, and that she be replaced with an Alderman. She serves on the Finance Administration and Intergovernmental Relations Committee of this fine organization. Our city should be represented by an Alderman who is in good standing, and Alderman Hansen is not in good standing. Alderman Hansen's violation of our city's Code of Ethics has damaged the relationship between African-American organizations in Franklin and fostered distrust among citizens. Further, her email and demands of BNA resulted in negative publicity for our fine city and for your honorable board. Accountability is necessary. Thank you.
Hello, Board members. My name is Rod Berger. I'm one of the seven individuals who filed an ethics complaint against Alderman Hansen. I'm not here to relitigate what ultimately was found by the Ethics Committee. I believe their unanimous decision against Alderman Hansen supports sound judgment and application of the ethics code. This is about representation, in my opinion, representation of self and/or representation of one's constituency. It is public record that Alderman Hansen has on multiple occasions spoken, quote, "for Franklin residents," whereby no comment or official representation was requested. Whether it be in reference to the Covenant tragedy or in, quote, "speaking for supporters of local Juneteenth events," Alderman Hansen has grossly represented her position and, in doing so, and in effect conveyed a summary position by this board without prior consent or consideration. Alderman Hansen, in my estimation, has ulterior motives to gain favor with a subset of local voters in an attempt to win the mayoral election. Alderman Hansen has abused her position, leveraged that position at the expense of local citizens, and done so not to the advantage of her constituency, but to the detriment of our local community. Yes, you can take the unanimous decision of the Ethics Committee and censure Alderman Hansen. I believe the appropriate action is the removal of her position as Alderman. If Alderman Hansen had the community's best interests, she would have apologized for her actions related to Juneteenth and BNA's participation. She didn't. She secured legal representation that threatened this body and the greater city of Franklin on the false pretense of her First Amendment rights. I would, however, like to take a brief moment to commend counsel representing the city for their professional decorum in handling the proposed litigation via Alderman Hansen's representation, Daniel Horowitz, to the city and individual and volunteer members of the Ethics Panel. Threatening this body with a financial penalty akin to a Davidson County finding mirrors the actions of Horowitz' client, Alderman Hansen. It's time that normal is represented by common sense voices, not by divisiveness merely intended for shock value and political gain. The actions of Alderman Hansen and her representatives are downright patronizing. A violation of the ethics code does not require a violation of law, and counsel knows that. It is unfair that citizens and this body even have to discuss said issues of overreach. We should have faith that local leaders have common sense and, above all, decorum as representatives of the body politic. Thank you for your time and commitment to this community.
Thank you. My name is Emily Jenkins, and I'm a citizen of the City of Franklin and one of the complainants who filed an ethics complaint against Alderman Gabriel Hansen. I want to express my thanks again to the Ethics Commission for faithfully performing their duties and refusing to bow to threats by Alderman Hansen that she would retaliate against them individually if they did their duties as a commission. As you know, we have an Alderman that has repeatedly used her office to divide the community, to create tension amongst African-American organizations, and to denigrate the work of hard-working nonprofits doing actual good for this community. She's placed her own beliefs above the good of the city, wrongfully abused her power under a claim of authority of the city, and behaved in a shamefully unethical manner. Threatening harm on the reputations of others if they don't hand over a, quote, "large check" is unconscionable. Alderman Hansen has proven time and time again that she does not grasp the ethical standards that she has a duty to uphold as an elected official, and that she believes herself entitled to use her title for her own pleasure and for the financial gain of organizations that she favors. Fortunately, the city does have a process to check naked power grabs with the ethics code, and that process has been followed. The Ethics Commission has held a full hearing and determined that Alderman Hansen has violated multiple provisions of the code, which they have referred to you with recommendations for censure. All that is before you is the question of whether you will allow these violations to pass without consequences. I ask that you follow the recommendations of the community servants you appointed to the Ethics Commission and censure Alderman Hansen. While I believe that removal is the most appropriate response to her actions, at a minimum, I would ask that the city publicly disavow her conduct, that she be required to recuse herself from any future votes that involve the nonprofits serving the African-American community, given her obvious bias. I would further ask that the censure include a prohibition against using her personal email accounts to communicate on behalf of the city, given that she is willfully violating public records law and hiding her unethical conduct by keeping it hidden from public oversight. I appreciate the hard work that all of you do as public servants, and hope that you will ensure that your reputation as a body is not permanently damaged by one bad actor.
Any comments from the board? Alderman Brown?
Well, this matter isn't necessarily about AHS. I do need to disclose that I do sit on the Board of AHS, and I was also the primary author of the response that went back to BNA from AHS. So I think it's important that the public understand my role in that part of it that is referenced in the core of the complaint here.
Alderman Baggett?
Well...
I've got Alderman Baggett.
Well, I just thought, I don't know what to do in this situation because it's not done, but if I was in Alderman Hansen's shoes, I would like to be offered maybe if you have a comment to make or, you know...
I have a comment that my attorney will be present in any further conversations, and you really should have let him know that this was on the agenda tonight because he did ask you, and you said it would not be.
Who was that? I'm... When was that?
We reached out to one of you, and it could have been Gail Ashworth or someone else, and he specifically asked, and he was told no.
Well, we publicized the agenda. It's been out for some time.
He specifically asked last week.
I never had that question, but we certainly would have been formed.
He specifically asked.
Did not ask me, I tell you that.
He'll be present in any and all conversations moving forward. Thank you.
The attorney-to-attorney conversation I'm aware of with Alderman Hansen's counsel was the question, has there been a written decision? And that was answered, no, there's no written decision yet, and I will notify you when there is, just like I told him I would do at the hearing. That is the extent of the conversation with counsel for Alderman Hansen.
Vice Mayor?
Some decisions should be made. We should be able to make a decision on the 22nd of August, right? So what was the information that we were supposed to be getting before that? We were getting the minutes? Go ahead.
You will receive, when it's entered, the written decision with the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and reasons for decision that the Ethics Commission will authorize and enter. They'll sign it. It will have attached to it the actual transcript of the proceedings with all of the documentation. That is expected to be done on Monday at noon.
This coming Monday?
Yes, sir. So that should be available sometime later that day, possibly earlier that day, but after that meeting.
What are the parameters, then, of censorship? Go ahead.
So I'll just read to you what censure means. Censure means to reprimand or to criticize harshly. What you've heard is true in some situations. Censorship can also mean removal of certain committee assignments. We have never had a censorship again in the city since I've been here, and definitely... We created the ordinance in 2007 for ethics, so since 2007, there's been no censorship. I can't say that there hasn't been one prior to that. We might have. You do have censorship abilities in your charter, and we know you've had that since at least the 1970s. So generally, it is, you know, something where you say on the record that you think the behavior was not appropriate, unethical, that kind of thing. There isn't a removal aspect. That's not on the table. Censorship is not removal. But it could mean a removal from committees if that's something that you wanted to do.
But not remove, but not removable from an elected position that the voters voted on and put Alderman Hansen in that elected position.
Right. There's only one way in the state of Tennessee to do that, and that's ouster.
Because the board won't see a resolution at the August 22nd meeting. Alderman Potts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on what I'm hearing from the request from our city administrator as well as from our city's legal counsel, I think it is necessary to move forward with the resolution for August 22nd regarding the findings from the Ethics Commission and their rulings and all supporting matters.
And Alderman Hansen's attorney will receive the appropriate notice?
Yes, he's aware of the August 22nd meeting, and he is aware the written decision has not been entered yet, and that he will receive that as soon as it is done. So he was told that on the 27th and told that again last week.
And it will be on the agenda, so it will be publicly noticed as we do all other matters that you would consider, resolutions, ordinances.
I've got a question because I feel like the legal aspect of this has kind of taken place to some degree. I mean, it has, the legal process as far as within our ordinances.
You mean the hearing itself?
The hearing, right. The quasi-judicial, if that's the term. But so I guess what I... The censure in the code is the censure means an expression of severe criticism or approach. Can we do that just if... Is an ethics violation required for us to be able to censure at all? Or can we get together and have a censure for any... If I do something that is, the rest think is, you know, express severe criticism and reproach, they can just do that?
Right, so your charter...
It's not contingent. The censure is not contingent on the ethics violation, but in this situation, the Ethics Commission initiated a recommendation for censure. Is that right?
Right, because there were complaints filed pursuant to the ethics ordinance. So the process had to happen in that way, but your charter provides for censure ability and has since the 1970s. And that was before an Ethics Commission was even thought about or required. So you've had that ability.
I think it's important for the public to know that what we're considering is not a part of the ethics, necessarily of the ethics review process. It is in response to a recommendation. So this was not initiated by us. This was not... It's been recommended to us by a body, and someone could... The public can come and ask us to censure, you know, censure me for something, and it could be taken up. So I think it's important to know that this, whatever we're taking up on the 22nd is not... The process has already taken place of the ethics review. We're just... Are we going to express severe criticism and reproach or not? That's the decision.
This is just one avenue to get censorship questions before you. And this was, you know, obviously, it came about from an ethics complaint specifically to the Ethics Commission, and like...
From citizens.
From citizens. And as other recommending bodies do, they do ask for you to look at things, you know, just like the tree commission might ask you to look at certain trees versus other trees for a city, and then it's up to you what you do with it. This is an actual recommendation that you do, you really do have to look at because they're your body asking you to look at something. But you don't have to rely on Ethics Commission.
Okay, if there's any other comments, we're going to continue to move on, and thank you for coming tonight. And item two is Civil War Historical Commission report.
So as we do periodically, we have some of the citizen commissions report to the board, give an update, and it's the Civil War Historic Commission's turn, so take away.
Thank you, Eric. I'd just like to introduce Rich Buckner, who's the Chair of the Civil War Historical Commission, and he'll be presenting an update to the bonfire.
Good evening. I am happy we have a very positive report of the Civil War Historic Commission for you tonight. Next slide. I'll have it in a moment.
It was a great report, Rich. Thanks.
I told you to be brief. Set a new record.
Here we go. All right. The success we've had is due to several factors, but mainly to a revamped commission. About a year and a half ago, we restructured the entire commission, and that has energized and brought new focus to the commission. The commissioners you see on this list have worked really hard this year to achieve everything we've accomplished. They get all the credit for what we've had of our successes. We meet six times a year as a commission, every other month on the second Thursday at 8:00 a.m. As I rehearsed, I kept saying Tuesday for some reason. I do know it's on Thursday. There are subcommittees of the commission, and they meet more often because that's where the work is done. We've been going through three different initiatives in the last few years as a commission. The first one is audio tours. Now, you know about the Wayfinding Program, and that was implemented last year to show residents and visitors a way to get to the historic sites. Well, what we realized with that was we needed to upgrade the audio tours. Well, what we realized with that was we needed to upgrade the audio tours. The audio tours are our education to the people once they get to those sites. The old program has outlived itself. It's inconsistent and in many ways, very antiquated. This subcommittee has worked this past year to reorganize the program and build a new set of audio tours that are fitting to Franklin today. The subcommittee continues to work, and their plan is to be complete by the end of 2024. The second initiative is the U.S. line markers. We have one significant indicator of the Battle of Franklin, and that is the U.S. Army Defense Line at the time of the battle. For a while, we've worked on a program to mark this line with permanent markers where they intersect today's major streets. This past year, we've implemented a pilot program to erect the first two markers at the epicenter of the battle on Carter Hill along Columbia Avenue. I am really happy to tell you that we will dedicate those markers this fall. I know that for a fact because they're in the final stages of being manufactured right now. I also want to thank BOMA for approving the budget and funding the rest of this program. That allows us to implement this program and make it a reality in the next two years. Now, you've heard an awful lot about wayfinding in the last couple of years. That's the program that has 94 signs directing residents and visitors to our historic sites. Over half of those signs are now in place, and we're getting really good reviews on the signs. The remainder will be installed this fall, and so that program will be complete. We've had such a good year, and a lot of that is because our commissioners have really worked hard. But they've worked hard with the help of the staff from planning. We couldn't have done it without planning. They give us guidance, they give us direction on what we want to do, they pull us back when we need to be pulled back, and all of that. But those, but our successes are deeper than this. We have had the collaboration and hard work of other city departments and staff, and they have really come to our benefit this year. That includes the Streets Department with the Sign Shop, Engineering, Parks, Communication. They've all helped us achieve these great successes. And we want to thank all the city staffers who have really chipped in and helped us to make this year the success that it's been. That's all I have. I'm certainly willing to take questions.
That's a lot to give. Great job. Any questions or comments from the board?
I just really like those signs.
Yeah.
They look really sharp, I like the color. They're very readable, and they stand out, so people really don't miss them. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Thank you, Kelly. Annual Tree Commission Report.
It's the Tree Commission's turn to do the same thing.
Sure. So most of you all know we do have a Tree Commission, and we, I've been on the board for 12 years. I've left, Ms. Ann had it before me, but we are a small but mighty group. I'm the Chair, we've got Kim Hoover, Beth Adams, Jenny Zalagi Williamson, who's also on the Planning Commission, Justin Stelter, who's our green industry professional, Michael Johnson with Middle Tennessee Electric is our electrical utility, a new member, Trent Witherow, who's a certified arborist, and is that everybody? It's everybody, all right? So we were meeting monthly 12 years ago, but we don't have a lot of business. So our meetings were about 10 minutes long. So now we're not meeting as much. We're doing every other month, and we usually meet on Mondays, and sometimes we double up and we have Tree Commission events like Arbor Day. Speaking of which, one of the reasons we receive our Tree City USA designation, one of the requirements is to host an Arbor Day event, and we have done that, I don't know, 10 years now or longer?
Longer.
Maybe longer. Okay. We have had our Tree City designation for the last 17 years. So the other things we do is we advise on tree plantings in the community. We try to actually get our hands on the dirt. We don't have those kind of opportunities very often, but we are currently working on a street tree inventory with software, so we are raising the bar. You go right ahead.
Well, Brandy mentioned Arbor Day, and it's probably one of the highlights of our year this year. Obviously, we made some huge changes, meaning Tree Commission agreed to those, and our Parks Department, but also our Communication Department was a huge help on the, as far as the advertising, PR side of things. We looked at new, we, basically, the biggest thing is we approved our attendance. And I know, I'm looking around the room, I know I've seen some people there, and our attendance was pretty small, but it was way bigger this year. We had a lot more activities. We changed our footprint of the event. We added giveaways, and I had intended to bring you some, but they were so popular, I don't have any left. We had some cute little tree stress balls. We had some cute little wooden pens and some things like that. So we added a lot of things. We added the Nashville Zoo. We added some features that would draw more people, so we were super excited about getting to add some of those live demonstrations and things like that. And as Brandy said, kind of looking on the future, there are some things here just due to mainly Park Staff hasn't been fully staffed on the urban forestry side, so we hope to get better at getting kind of the education campaign...
You left out the best part, but we are now.
We are, well, we're getting there. We got one. We got one left, Brandy. So we're one shy, and we're, our future is looking at the education campaign in schools. We want to get involved with our local schools and do more with those. We are doing a few workshops, lecture series in the past, but we want to expand that a little bit, do a better job at that, and really just improve on our advertising, PR side of things. And we did some of that this year, but we could do more. And like Brandy mentioned, tree inventory, the Tree Commission did vote for us to have a tree inventory done, and that is presently being done. Up to 5,000 trees. We're excited. That's more in the rideaway areas. So if you see someone doing work, they're supposed to have something on saying that, you can approach them, but they are there for that. It'll take about a month to do that. Second piece of that with the Parks Department would look at adding a software to go along with that program to be able to add to that inventory in the future. So super excited to have that. And these are just kind of some fun pictures. Some of this, again, Communications helped us with. Many of you may have seen to the far left, that is a cute little video, if you haven't seen those out there. It's called Timber. Unfortunately, Timber has left the network, and he's not with us anymore, but we've got to find a replacement. But we just did some cute things, and Communications, again, helped us with that, and kind of changing our event up this year as a more positive, so. So overall, we were, I was pretty pleased with the year Tree Commission had. Parks Department was involved, but also others helped make this possible for us, so.
And I think with Arbor Day, we really have a leg up, being married, if you will, to the Parks Department. They have such great success with Family Day and the Kids Art Day and all the things that they do and water, so we've really kind of taken that expertise and poured it into Arbor Day, hence the Nashville Zoo and things like that. Middle Tennessee Electric has always partnered with us by some way with food. But I really see this as an opportunity for us to get people in Pinkerton Park, not just get the hangers-on that happen to be at the park that want to walk over and get a free tree, which is wonderful. But we have people on the board who are master gardeners and love bird watching, and they want to implement those things in some lecture series, just to try to just pull the city in and show them that the Tree Commission is a contributing part of our city government. So.
Any questions for us?
Alderman talks.
I want to know, thank you, by the way.
Don't stop me and embarrass me, but go ahead.
$64,000 question is.
Sure.
But this is great. So I remember when we became a tree city, and it was really good because we were able to do a lot of these projects. Let me ask you, how do we get trees replaced around town where there is a need for a tree, or maybe a tree that died and was taken out, replaced, but it's not within a HOA, it's not in a master's association or a commercial association, like along Cruthers and Coal Springs, there's a master's association with the office and the businesses there and the residents? So they all go in and take care of those strips. We do not do that as a city in those areas. But there are different areas around town that I've noticed, especially after last year, but I've noticed trees missing and trees where we really need a tree. As aldermen, how can we put that request in that the city plants a tree? Because we have trees available and like them to be placed where they need to be placed.
Well, I think there's, the tree inventory is going to help quite a bit.
How do we do that, how do we, how do we, up here, how do we do that when, in Ward Four and I'm in Ward One and Two and Three, and how do we, or the large people, if we notice that? What's the process that we can call somebody and say, hey, could we get that on a list? Could we get a new tree?
Right. I think, like Brandy said, the tree inventory is going to be a huge push for the change in some of that. That's going to include a lot of downtown and some other areas. What we're going and discovering through this process is there's some gray areas that we are having to look at and see whose property or who maintains HOA or non-HOA that are historically just older properties that we don't know. And so we're having to dig and do a little bit of research on some of those, but downtown is part of this too. So once we get everything inventoried that can grow on that and expand, I think it's going to change a lot of, as far as how we look at trees and look at replacements and those type of things.
And I think you're asking, who do you reach out to?
I don't want to wait one or two years.
So I think urban forestry...
I'd like this fall, a couple of trees placed in Ward One. And I know for a fact that they're not taken care of by a master's association or...
So Brian Walker.
You can put that request in with Urban Forestry, Brian Walker, and he can come look at it, and we can, you know, look at that space of what you're wanting, you know, that area, what type of tree, so, yeah, we'll look at it.
And Bev, I think, as we all know, there's certain prime times to do any kind of planting.
Fall, if I'm interested.
So it's not like we can respond, I say, I don't do it, but they can respond to a tree out. But we, since I've been there, there's been intense tree removal. We did something on Royal Oaks right around Forest Crossing. That was a big project. I know back in the early days when Todd Snackenberg was our tree arborist, there was a project over by Barnes and Noble in Coal Springs.
Oh, yeah.
In the medians. So I think a lot of times, as this tree inventory progresses, you know that there are good and bad trees. I think we all have learned that, what is that tree? The Bradford pear?
Yeah, or the labals.
Was the thing to plant, but we know now, as we can, we want to replace those. And with our tree bank, there is a finite amount of trees that we can pull from our own stock because it's got to be a certain height and all of that. So it's kind of one of those processes. So there are more planned tree plantings in a big, large area than there is single one-offs, but it will get added to a list to be executed at the right time.
Yeah, because I noticed like three different places, there's one-offs.
That's great.
And I'm like, really, we need a tree.
I mean, not great, but yes, write it down.
And then I'm thinking, okay, it's August, within a couple of months, October, November, from there on, all the way through the winter is a good time to plant them, so.
Yep.
All right, I'll call Brian.
Thank you.
And we established the Tree Urban Forestry Crew about four or five years ago. That puts a focus on it. You can make that request, but our citizens can do the same thing. We've got a, I have a concern portal on our website.
Yep.
You can say, we need to replace this tree at this location. That's available, people, 24/7, to go on our website. Up in the corner, it says, I have a concern. You go there, and you can file that, and it'll get right to the right folks in terms of that replacement. So you don't have to be an alderman to make that request. You can just be any citizen, and we'll get it to the right folks.
We also don't have a program where HOAs or any, any small group of homes or anybody can buy trees through a tree bank. We don't have that program, do we?
Mm-mm.
I'm not aware of any. I just want to make sure.
Got it.
All right, thanks.
Awesome. Thank you all. Sorry, our people are not here tonight, but we did say their names, so.
That's right.
We've got an event permit for Franklin High School Home Incoming Parade, and we have the Porch Fest sponsored by West Haven Foundation. Any questions?
These are both returning events, have been going on for a long, long time.
Not will...
I'm curious why the Porch Fest has to have, why the Porch Fest has to have a permit?
They are closing just a small portion of Front Street that night for the event.
Oh, they're closing the street?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And we provide support.
We do, yeah.
To the event.
Okay, item five, item six is peddlers, solicitors, and itinerant merchants pop-up commercial merchandise sales services and permitting requirements.
So at our last meeting, work session in July, at the end of that, we had a brief discussion around this topic, got some feedback, but we want to circle back and get some more specifics. And I made an introduction earlier in this meeting. I want to make another introduction. If you have not met already, Blake Harper is our staff attorney. Blake's been with us, what, four or five months, something like that? Six, eight? Okay, sorry. Always double numbers. Years or months, I should double. But Blake's done a great job as our staff attorney and provides support to a number of different elements of our operations, and this is part of that. So we'll take you through that. I think Vernon's going to take the lead on that and walk through some specific questions and get some additional feedback from the board that will help shape some updates to our ordinance, so take it away, Vernon.
Thank you, Eric, Mayor, Alderman. Good evening to you, and we're going to come back to the discussion we only spent a few minutes on during the last work session. And the goal is to obtain some feedback. Blake is going to share some of the outdatedness of our current ordinance that pertains to peddlers, solicitors, and itinerant merchants. And then we have some specific questions. We'll spend an appropriate amount of time, leave that up to the mayor. And then what we'll do is we'll go back, take your feedback, work as time allows on updating an ordinance, and then bringing it back for additional discussion. So ideally, if we have consensus on the questions, great. If not, that's fine. The most important point of this presentation is to share what's outdated in it and get some feedback. So turn it over to Blake, our newest law defender there.
Thank you, Vernon. Good evening. I'm very excited to be here in front of you all. I'm here to talk about transient merchants. So I think you all would agree that over the last 20 years, transient merchants have changed a lot. And so we, we see things like people selling clothes out of back of trailers or vans. People have converted Airstream trailers into mobile pop-up shops, and that's just not something that we saw 20 years ago. So if I may, I'd like to go over what Franklin's current definitions, according to the code, are for transient merchants. So in Section 9201, you have solicitor, which is someone that goes from dwelling to dwelling, business to business, offering or attempting to take orders for goods. Then you have a peddler, and a peddler would be someone that also goes from home to home, street to street, business to business, but the difference with a peddler would be that they have the goods with them, and they're transporting them, offering them for sale. Now, what we're really here tonight to speak about is the itinerant merchant, and the itinerant merchant is anyone who sells goods or solicits services from a temporary location within the city with the permission of the owner. And so we see that a lot on street corners, and they do have to have a permit from the city, but, you know, so, let's see here, one permit per location, one person per permit. And so that's something that we've had issues with currently, is that businesses are wanting to have multiple permits for their business. So to explain that is they want to have multiple locations for one business around the city, or to be able to move, for example, a truck that has clothing items, whatever goods inside of it, to different locations around the city depending on where they feel the best business is for that day. Right now, the way the code's written is that they can only be in one location for that permit. Another thing I'd like you all to think about is the permit fee. Another thing I'd like you all to think about is the permit fee. So the permit fee currently, you pay a $50 fee for this itinerant merchant permit, but theoretically, it could last for up to one year. It, it doesn't technically have to be, most people do say it's just for, it's my understanding, it's just for a month or a week, what have you. But theoretically, the way it's written right now, they could have their permit for one location for a year. I am going to pass it on to Jessica, who will tell you a little bit more about the revenue management side.
Thank you, Blake, and good evening, Mayor and Alderman. So as Vernon and Blake have pointed out, the municipal code governs peddlers, solicitors, and itinerant merchants in one section of the code because many of the rules and regulations do apply to all three, which is why we are discussing them as a whole. However, we do have a matrix that we've prepared, and Vernon, maybe you can pull that up because I was going to use that. There we go. To sort of talk about them individually. And you'll see there's the three columns for peddlers, solicitors, and itinerant merchants. And then there is a fourth one that we have had some input from the community indicating that there's a desire to potentially have a fourth category for farm fresh produce sales. So that's, that's there as a possibility. So the first line on there, the first row is that, as Blake said, there is a permit required per individual. The definitions that he read to you earlier is a solicitor or a peddler or itinerant merchant is a person who seeks to do business in one of these means. For peddlers and solicitors, that's not been an issue. For itinerant merchants, they tend to operate more like a business with employees. And so there's been some questions about whether or not each and every person who's going to be working at their tent or their kiosk needs a permit. Right now, technically, they would. So that's why there's a question mark beside that one for guidance requested. And then the next one is that a permit is required per location. So that was what Blake mentioned as well. We've had some inquiries from itinerant merchant applicants that essentially are wanting to treat it like a business license for a mobile retail business where they can essentially have free range to sell their goods anywhere within the city limits. So right now, we're telling them they can get a, however many permits they want to get for however many locations, as long as they have the own, property owner's permission. So we, we don't know if there would be interest in maybe allowing them to have one permit and say that it can be good for multiple locations. Would we want to put a cap on the number of locations that each permit could be used at? Or we keep it the way it is? That has been a question that we've had from customers. The background check, we definitely want to keep the background check in the ordinance. The reason there's a question mark for itinerant merchants is because if we do go the route of changing the ordinance to allow the permit to be more for the company has a permit and maybe the individuals working for them just are listed and we do, maybe we could do a background check on them, but they don't have to have an individual permit. I did do a little research on some other municipalities, and it was interesting. I did find out that Metro actually does a company permit for solicitors, not for itinerant merchants. And then the ID badge for all of their employees is an additional fee, and they do a background check on each one of those people, but it's, it's a lesser fee. So we could think about structuring it that way if we wanted to, or we could just keep it as the owner or the manager is the only one that has the permit and does the background check. Do you have a question?
On what category was that again, that they did?
They do that for their solicitors.
Solicitors. So if a company had solicitors out saying, selling pest control, right?
Yes.
Do that one. That's a popular one here. They'd have to have a background check on everybody that had a badge that they put out there at the doors.
Yes. And that's what we do right now with our solicitors.
We still do that.
Yes. And I would not want to change that. But I did think that was an interesting structure and could potentially work for itinerant merchants, have one company permit for the business, and then the employees for a lesser charge, if he wants 10 people working at the stand, they each can have a background check and get an ID badge as like a sub-permit under the company umbrella. Or we could just have the one permit for the business, and whoever they want to employ is fine, and we don't have a list of those people, we don't do a background check on those people.
And the difference there is the itinerant merchant, these people are not going home to home.
Correct.
These people are stationary in a location where they have been approved and permitted.
Yes. And the people are coming to them. And they're stationary right now at the one location, but they are wanting to go to multiple. So just all things to consider.
When you say, I'm sorry. When you say they want to go to, because this is something, like they wake up and they think, I'm going to go to Bicentennial Park today. Or, or like, I guess, how do, why, what's the problem of getting, why wouldn't they just, I mean, I have no problem. I think we should know where each itinerant merchant should be, is, and just having kind of a blanket, kind of, that could be a problem.
The phone calls that we've gotten have been of the nature, like, I know I'm going to be at locations A, B, and C. I'm looking at two or three other locations that I think would be good. Do I need to come back and get a permit for them if I work it out with that property owner? Or I can only be in this location for a certain period of time? And so at the end of the summer, I'm going to try to find two or three other places. There's just an indication that they, they want to be able to move around.
If I may, the, the way that it's written right now, the business owner would have the permit, and in the situation that you're describing, we've had itinerant merchants come in and say that they want to have an employee go to multiple locations or multiple, multiple employees be at different locations, operating the business at the same time. So I'd like you all to think, how many locations is too many locations for one permit? Which it, it's, we just need to think as a, because right now, it's one permit per location. So once we open up the box, is it unlimited locate? Are they allowed to, to move throughout the city at approved locations? Or is it, you know, five, 10?
Right. That's a, a good point. They are, there's also been indication from some of the customers that they want to have more than one location operating at the same time.
Oh, please, Alvin, wow.
I know, I was waving at you, didn't see me. So where, first of all, I go back to the late 70s, early 80s, and I know things have changed, and I understand we can't do that, but people used to line the riverfront and it would be, and again, we have farmers markets now. It was the old school farmer's market, okay? Betty Reed's is now brick and mortar, which is lovely, or the Rittenberries. But if you think about seasonal things, like, like people that drive to town with their pickup truck full of wood. To me, when we start monitoring that kind of stuff, I feel like we're losing that small-town charm of, of allowing, I mean, where do you go by wood? You go to Matco and get a rick that's like wrapped in plastic or Kroger? I mean, it's one of those things that has to do with being southern. And, I mean, those type of people, they will drive to wherever they do until their load is empty for that day. Now, they do tend to stay in the same area because customers know where to find them, but they will drive from one end of the parking lot to the other, depending on what visibility they think they need for that day. I just, I know we're in 2023, and I know that, that we try to do things smart, and we're trying, the goal is to protect everyone. But at the same time, I don't want us to be so immersed in managing this that we're losing the nuances that make us be who we are as a community.
Well, and I think that's the spirit behind the fourth column, because right now, if someone were to call my office and say, I want to sell my firewood, and I've got permission from this property owner, what do I need to do to be able to set up there? I would tell them they need to apply for an itinerant merchant permit. And most of them would do it, and it would, it would be fine.
And what's the cost of that? $50?
$50, mhm. Plus the $1,000 surety bond, which is listed on here as a recommendation that we do.
See, some of these people don't have a thousand.
Right.
Is that, you don't pay a thousand?
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
You get the bond from insurance.
My notary thing, it's for a year. Okay.
If, if I, if I may to, as you can start to see, Blake and Jessica are very near to this, and are, are building a neighborhood services team, follows up on the, the complaints or the situations as they may, may arise related to this ordinance. What I would suggest is, right now, the peddlers, solicitors, and itinerant merchants are grouped all together, and as you can see, the same rules apply to them as far as the permit and the background check and, and the bond. And I, I want to try to chip something away here to, to help, you know, just reveal the, the datedness of, of this ordinance. The $1,000 bond that's required per individual, per permit, is, is for someone who has purchased something from a peddler or solicitor to come back to the city to claim that it wasn't what they were revealed. And I'm not sure that's ever happened in my almost 17 years here, or in the other communities approaching now 36 years. And is that needed? Is $1,000 needed from every single peddler, solicitor, and itinerant merchant? So just think about that. The other part of this is perhaps we want to break out peddlers and solicitors because they go from dwelling to dwelling, business to business, essentially on the public right-of-way, whereas the itinerant merchant and/or the produce farm sales would be on private property that require permission. So as, as, as you talk about this, that, that's, that's part of it. The other piece of it that coincidentally came up when Blake and Jessica brought it to my attention and we started discussing it, that I went home one evening and turned on the Nashville News, and sure enough, they had a segment where residents were concerned about peddlers or solicitors coming to their door late in the evening. And I draw your attention to the third line to the bottom, that our ordinance provides for peddlers and solicitors to knock on doors, and granted, people often put signs up, no solicitors, no peddlers, from seven to, from nine to seven or nine to eight during daylight savings time. And the question that was on the, the news segment was, is that too late in the evening for strangers to come knocking on, on someone's door in a neighborhood? So, and then the application fee, we presently have, as Blake mentioned, quasi-permit fee, it's $50. Do we want to institute an application fee and then have that permit fee be annual and have a different fee for it because of the work to do a background check if we're going to continue to require bonds and that type of thing? So I would ask you to start thinking about if you want to break apart the peddlers and solicitors from itinerant merchants and, you know, go from there.
Let me give an example. We had a produce truck, and the gentleman's been here double-digit years, he's been here for a long, long time. And he has multiple locations, and he was also trying to get some different locations available, maybe move some locations that might not have been so great. Some were great. And I actually went and visited his location this summer, see, he was having an issue trying to get more permits and things. So I'm looking at this, I'm with Brandy. Let's not overthink this or overdo this, but we definitely need to have this conversation because there's some changes that definitely need to be made. I think we have to break them out, definitely. I don't, I don't want to put itinerant merchants in fresh farm produces with peddlers and solicitors, it's a whole different bulk. So personally, after looking at what happened this summer and looking at, you know, a business person going and being in our city, that's, that fruit was a seasonal fruit. He's here for so long, he's in, he's out, he's gone. He also lives in our community. We have a lot of people living in our community. Firewood was a great example. We have a fellow inside the road of going out towards the fork, a fellow with his truck with the tomatoes and things of that nature. I want to make sure that we protect our farmers and our small growers and the people that firewood, people that are doing these things, putting this produce, this wood together in their land, selling it to the local people. We have to have that. We have to protect them. We have to make way for them. Don't want to overburden them either with the, the fees. And I, I really don't see this, maybe we have one fee. If you have one to six locations, you pay one fee. And that's good for all your locations, but you have to list the locations. And if you change the locations, you're required to change that before you actually change locations. So you have to call the city, say, I'm, I'm leaving from this corner, and I'm going up, a mile up the road, I'm going to this corner, and I'm changing, and you have to submit that. I don't think we need to go charging them for that. I don't think we need to overburden them with, you have to have not only a permit, but you have to pay for each location, and then you have to pay, you know, as I said, you might have one to three locations is this much, three, four to six locations is this much. And then if we make them pay a fee for every single person that works there, that's really a burden. Because you have college students, you have high school students, you have retired people that come in and they go, I can work, Dave, for you for two hours this morning on Saturday morning. And then Sue comes in and says, I can work the last two hours. And then you have people rolling up, I don't want them paying 20 or $25 for that person or $50, whatever it is, for Sue and David and all these people. That's just really too much. So I think we have to think about, you know, put yourself in that position. If I'm the farmer, I'm the person, I'm the produce salesperson, I'm coming in, and I've got 20 people going to work for me in four locations, they're going to roll off, maybe some of them take two or three hours in the morning and two or three later in the morning. I think we have to look at those kinds of things.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Other comments? Or y'all want, go ahead, Alvin, Potts.
I just had a question. Jessica, could you give an example that's not farm-related, as Alderman Berger was saying? You were saying somebody had come in and said, well, we'd like, I'd like to have five people around town.
Sure. We had a, what I would call a mobile boutique that sets up at a parking lot of another retail establishment right now, and the owner of that business is interest, very interested in doing it at various locations throughout the city. And I, I may be wrong, but I believe she applied for a second permit, to have a second location, which was really wanting to do it at several different locations throughout the city.
And so when you say mobile boutique, sorry, not familiar with it, but what is it? And is it a trailer, a truck, like a passenger van?
I haven't seen the, the vehicle, but from the description that I've heard, it's a, it's a, it's a truck of some sort.
It's a, a brand new, like, a street.
Yes, that's it. That's it. Yeah. Women's clothing, things like that. The customers go inside to shop and, yes.
Where your wife's been shopping.
I think, I think it's something Mr. Potts needs to investigate.
That's it.
Yeah. Go ahead, Alvin Brown.
I'm just curious, how do, how do food trucks work who go to multiple places within a city and have employees? Like, how is that permitting comparative to this?
So that's the building and neighborhood services department. I'm going to let Vernon.
I can speak very well to that. So several years ago, worked with the Board of Mayor and Alderman to look at mobile food vendors, and we concluded that if a mobile food vendor had received permission from a property owner, that that vendor could stay there 24/7 even when it was an open for business, one per property. The other ones need to move when not in operation. And that's the same for itinerant merchants. I would strongly encourage you not to allow itinerant merchants to set up permanently on a, on a property. And, does that answer your question? Because I think to elaborate a little bit more from Alderman, Potts, that, for example, estheticians that apply eyelashes or certain type of facial treatments, they're very common of setting up as itinerant merchants at certain locations where, you know, people frequent. So that's another, another type. I know that we have a tanning salon that, you know, where, I had mentioned a couple weeks ago, that perhaps a consideration of whether we're allowing people to go inside a trailer. Not even with mobile food vendors does that occur, but, and that's a different section of the ordinance. But, you know, doing the- But, you know, doing the background check was set up for a reason even 30, 50 years ago when this ordinance, you know, was established. So it's a consideration as we look to update it. And to reinforce what I started out, because I know our time is running short, there'll be ample opportunity to provide more feedback because what you've shared already is valuable. We've got our work to do on the ordinance and will solicit some more feedback.
All right, let's just, I love giving feedback on this, but let's, can we cut some, can we get some feedback? So it's peddlers and solicitors, all the things on there, I think everyone kind of agrees, I haven't heard any opposition, to the timeline, to the permit fee, to the bond, although the bond does run a credit check. Is the background check also running a credit check or not?
The background check is run by our police department.
So the bond, the bond actually could serve the purpose, it's a, it's a, it's a credit, you have to have a credit check to get the bond, but it's fine. So itinerant merchants, I've heard everyone say, everything down below on the permit fees seems, no opposition to that. Hours of operation, why wouldn't they be similar?
Well, ours.
What I'm going to suggest, if I could, is, this is a great matrix that Vernon's created, and maybe set it up so that the Alderman could go in and fill in those blanks where you're asking that question, and whether the answers are appropriate, and then just send it back. And I think, like Alderman Baggett's saying, that'll get us on our way much quicker.
He brought up the time and stuff, and wintertime and summertime is different. I don't want somebody banging at somebody's door at 7:00 PM at night on a winter. You've got to either do four thirty or five, and then in the summertime, I think it's appropriate for seven o'clock. After seven, I don't think that's a good idea. And people can weigh in on that. We need to weigh in on that. And the other thing is, big difference, and I'll end with this, because we need to, we need input with you, and then, I like the mayor's suggestion, and we need to bring it back into the discussion. But if you got, if you got an airstream, and you got like, gosh, tiny little donuts, it's got an airstream, you have to go in to get the food, but you're in, you're out. But if you're going in, and there's an esthetician, you said? I'm not aware of that. But if you go in and you're getting a service, it's a whole different ballgame because you're going in, you're staying in that place, you're being worked on by somebody, putting eyelashes on, I don't know what they all do, I guess I should know that, but that's a whole different ballgame. If you walk in and you're going to buy some donuts, you're going to go in there and buy a smoothie or a coffee, and then you walk back out. But if you're getting a service and people, you're hands-on, you're talking about a different ballgame.
I agree with you. If I may, there is a distinction in the code between, for example, if you were to have your dog groomed, mobile dog grooming, if you're calling them to come to your house, that's not accounted for, that's not accounted for in the itinerant merchant.
We wouldn't require them to have an itinerant merchant.
Just to keep that in mind.
That's a difference.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
How about the development activity report?
Catherine's coming up for this. This is our six, first six months of the calendar year and closes out the 23 fiscal year, so Catherine will take this through for you.
Good evening, everybody. I will do my best to be quick. As Eric said, this is, you're going to be your six-month calendar year update and also a review of your fiscal year 23 development activity. We're going to start with the mid-year update, and we're going to be, start with permitting. If you look on your far, at the bottom of your far-right corner of the table, we issued 2,595 permits in total from January to June. And if you see the breakout with building permits, that's 488. Trade permits, that's your mechanical, your plumbing, and your electrical, that's a little over 2,000 permits. And then all the other permits, that's mostly pool permits, demolition permits, and floodplain. Those all totaled to be about 75. And that's a little bit lower than where we usually are at this time of year, and this is going to be kind of a trend that you'll see as we move on through the rest of the Next is our fees. With permit fees, so far in 2023, we've collected a little over $800,000. Water and sewer, we've collected $791,000. Road impact fees was a little over 1.4 million, and facilities tax, we've collected a little over half a million dollars. Again, this is a good bit lower than where we usually are this year. I will say that this is really due to the fact that a lot of what we've been permitting in the last six months have been single-family homes and townhomes. There has been a noticeable decline in non-residential and commercial activity is on the permitting side, and you really see that reflected here with the impact fees. And again, you can see that reflected in the construction value of the permits. We took, we had a 45% decrease from where we were in June of 2022. So far, the value, the total value of the permits is about 166 million. And as you can see where we were in June, we were a little over $300 million in the construction value. Again, this is really reflected in not having a whole lot of commercial permitting activity so far, and not a lot of multifamily development either. And so dwelling units that we permitted in the first six months, you can see in that little corner, we issued permits for 115 single-family homes, 76 townhomes, but no multifamily dwelling units so far this year. And you can see with the last 10 years or so, we have seen a little bit of a decline in single-family. Townhomes have kind of been up and down, and then you really see kind of those big peaks and valleys with multifamily units. Yes.
Sorry. When we look at the annual numbers that you show there, 2015 through 2022, is that January 1 through June, or is that a totality?
Yes, all of this is six months.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
It's just a six-month comparison, yes. And as we move on, I'll go to the fiscal year review, and this will be everything from July 1st, 2022, to June 30th of 2023. And this is going to be a similar structure to the mid-year numbers. Total number of permits in fiscal year 23 was 5,364. Building permits, that's a little over 1,000. Trade permits, a little bit over 4,000, and 140 miscellaneous permits with your pools and demolition and floodplain. Yeah, trade is mechanical, plumbing, and electrical. Yeah, yes. And these numbers are a little bit lower, but not as much as with the calendar year. So what, that really tells us that the last six months of 2022 were really strong, and we're really seeing that decline in the first six months of 2023.
Question, other permits is 140, so that's the highest in that column.
Yes.
And what does that include?
So that is floodplain, that is pool permits, and that is demolition. Same thing with permit and impact fees. Permit fees in fiscal year 23, we collected a little over 2.1 million. That's pretty standard, pretty in line with where we've been in the last five years. Water and sewer, we collected a little, almost $2 million. With roads, it was 4.7 million, and facilities, it was a little lower at 1.2. I will say with water and sewer, it's been a bit lower both in the fiscal year and the calendar year. A lot of that goes with the developments just requiring a smaller meter size, and also a lot of the developments we've been permitting are not in our water district, so we don't collect water impact fees on those. And what's interesting is you saw the construction value decline in the calendar year, but actually in the fiscal year, you see it rise a little bit, about 13%. The total construction value of the permits issued in FY '23 was about $755 million. And so again, that kind of reinforces what I said earlier, that we had a really strong end of 2022, but we're starting to see a little bit of a decrease in 2023. And then with new dwelling units added, we permitted in total 196 single-family homes, 213 townhomes, and 92 multifamily dwelling units. So the fiscal year was kind of a low number for multifamily, but was still rather strong with townhomes and single-family. And to just close it out, overall, we have seen a little decrease in permitting activity in the last few months. This is, again, particularly with non-residential development. This has really been a trend since the pandemic. There's not really anybody looking to build a lot of office space right now. But, and there also was a decrease in multifamily units. But even though this is just on the permitting side, we're still seeing a lot of activity on our plan review side. We still have several large developments that are kind of working through our entitlement process. For single-family, you have like poplar farms. Multifamily, you have like the optima. And so we still see strong activity on the plan review side. It just hasn't reached the point to where it's getting permitted and getting ready for construction.
We are seeing some decrease in the overall vacancy in office, so that's actually showing some improvement, especially what they call the Tier One, Class A. That's at, I just saw a report today showed that in Franklin had about 7% vacancy, that had been higher than that. So we're seeing some trend down there. The collective vacancy is about 17%. That had been above 20%. So we are seeing some trending down, and especially a desire for the more, what they call amenitized, Class A. So that, we're seeing some movement there. Our per square foot value is still among the very highest in the region there as well. So you're seeing some movement, some change back to some more in-office use than we saw a year or two years ago. So it's kind of a moving target. Some of this is what you see in the development pipeline, some of it is how the existing space is being used. So those trends continue to develop, and we're tracking those as well.
With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great report. Item eight, Amendment Two to City of Franklin Contract 2019-0031 with Clayton Properties Group, Inc. and Reese Farms LLC for road impact fee reimbursement agreement in amount not to exceed $200,000.
This is the item we, we talked to you about last time, related to some additional improvement work by the developer on our behalf in the Del Rio area. And this just memorializes that. You kind of gave us a nod to keep that moving, which has been great to keep them on that, and Paul can give us an update on that and on when Del Rio will reopen.
This opportunity was brought to us by the Street Department Inspector, Steve Grub and his team, and the curb was finished pour today. They've got tie-ins to do with the curb. They're finishing up Baystone over the next two weeks, and then binder goes down, and they're going to open the road as, hopefully, early September is what I'm being told. We just need good weather, no more rain. So we'll get that open. Now, it's going to be under binder, so there's still some work that'll happen over the course of two, three, four months, probably finished up, obviously, before winter hits, but it'll be open as far as the general public is concerned.
Item nine, Resolution 2023-55, Resolution authorizing the use of a competitively sealed proposal procurement methods related to the selection of owners' representation consulting services for the new City Hall project.
One of the things when we looked at the most recent step in schematic design on the City Hall project was to also bring on board an owners' rep to help us look at value engineering opportunities. We're pursuing that. We want to do a procurement that allows us to look at their sealed proposal, but also the quality of those that put that forward. So when we do that, we get the board's approval upfront to go into that process. So that's what this is doing. It's on both agendas for you tonight. One of the other things we heard back from the board was the idea, too, that the board may want to be represented in that selection process. So we would welcome that if one of you wants to volunteer or nominate one of your colleagues to be part of that. We would welcome their participation in identifying, identifying somebody that can help us in that selection. It's an important role as we look at ways to reduce costs, so I think he.
I'm in.
He's ready. That sounds like, that sounds like my acclamation.
Ready to go to 10? City of Franklin Contract 2021-41 with Orchard, Hiltz, and McClellan, Inc., doing business as OHM Advisors regarding the new City Hall project at no cost to the city.
Yeah, this is just an update of the schedule and deliverables related to it. Again, no cost to it, it just updates that with that process.
City of Franklin Contract 2023-0223 with the Tennessee Department of Transportation to enter into a license agreement to provide secondary access to the water reclamation facility at no cost to the city.
I'll let Chris talk about this because Chris started this when he was our management fellow, and now he's finishing it as our Public Works Operations Analyst. So Chris, talk about this. This is a great thing to have gotten done in terms of some access and taking some traffic away from a neighborhood and to our water reclamation facility.
Thank you for having me, sorry. I just ran over here, so. I was working on some grant applications. So this came to us from Alderman Matt Brown. Currently, there's a temporary access to the water reclamation facility for construction. His request was for Chestnut Bend and Franklin High School to have, make that temporary access permanent. So that's what we went through with the TDOT excess land request, and we have gotten that. So. You're welcome.
And there are some that would say this would take years. It took about a year.
Like 10 months.
Yeah, so we're glad to have it. It will take most of the truck traffic, but probably not all of the truck traffic. There will be some exceptions dependent on routing, but we're glad to take that off and have this be established as an ongoing access point, so.
And it's going to be a locked gate access only for people with a card. So that was their main stipulation, it cannot be used for residential traffic. So if there's any questions, I can answer.
Box of chocolates might be better than a card.
I think Alderman Brown will want to make that motion at the 7:00.
How about Ordinance 2023-29, an ordinance to rezone .10 acres from residential R6 District to PD 20 District for the property located south of Mount Hope Street and west of Ninth Avenue North at 611 Mount Hope Street. Establish a public hearing on September the 12th, 2023. Everybody good with that one?
Wow, Amy and Derek, we're going to have you do more items here.
Yeah, I think we're all familiar with it and glad it's going to happen. So item 13 is.
They're good.
You're good to go.
You nailed it.
Yeah, the presentation was really great. Thanks a lot. Item 13 is Resolution 2023-50, Resolution approving development plan for 611 Mount Hope PUD subdivision with one modification of developed standard parking for the property located south of Mount Hope Street and west of Ninth Avenue North located at 611 Mount Hope Street.
It's the development plan that goes with that rezoning.
And 14 is Resolution approving a revised development plan for West Haven PUD subdivision for the property located south of Highway 96 West and west of Boyd Mill Pike. Establishing a public hearing September the 12th, 2023.
Would you like to present?
Please.
Great. The purpose of the proposed revision to West Haven PUD subdivision development plan is to increase the height, allowance to five stories for the proposed independent living facility located in the jewel property area, and then to remove the road connection from the jewel property area to New Highway 96. This request to allow for the five-story increase would better align with what is actually currently allowed within the West Haven pattern book. And then the request to move the road connection to Highway 96 is to accommodate a stream and a wetland to the north of the property, which staff supports. Developer has provided a memo update to the TIA, and there were no significant impacts to the original recommendations. There are no proposed changes to the total number of dwelling units or to the commercial footage. Staff and the Board of, staff and the Planning Commission recommended to the Board of Mayor Alderman to approve Resolution 2023-51.
Item 15, City of Franklin Contract 2023-0225 with Traveler's Insurance to renew the City of Franklin's fiduciary liability policy effective July 1st, 2023.
This is also on both agendas. It updates, this is an ongoing policy that we have for fiduciary coverage, primarily deals with the administration of the employee pension plan, the committee's work, and the work that staff does to support that, so.
Right, that's it. Simply put, we manage health plans and retirement accounts, so we act as a fiduciary, we need to have insurance for that.
And the way this is written as well requires the mayor's signature, so we need the board to approve it so that the mayor can sign. to approve it so that the mayor can sign.
Right.
And item sixteen is ordinance 2022-18 and ordinance to amend the City of Franklin Municipal Code Title Twenty, Chapter Two, Alarm Systems Burglary Hold Up Panic and to amend Appendix A, Chapter Twenty, Miscellaneous.
So we just talked about updating the peddlers and solicitors. This updates the alarm permit schedule. It's been some time, and this updates that accordingly. And Shawna and Chief can speak to that.
I'm just gonna sort of set the stage, because really, the, the impact is with the, with the police department. But we, as far as I can tell, we haven't changed the ordinance, at least since two thousand nine, probably even before that. I can't remember changing the fee for alarms. And if you know what I'm talking about, if you have NCA, or, I don't know, some of those alarm, any of that, any of those kind of things, and, and obviously, commercial buildings all have them, you have to pay a permit fee, and then it's a one-time setup, and then an annual fee, and then, of course, anytime we have false alarms, there are penalties to that, but it takes a long time to get to a penalty. So I'm gonna let Chief kind of explain the impact that the police are seeing now, and why we're asking you to increase the fee and increase the penalty, but make the penalty happen faster.
It's been fourteen years, and lots changed in this city, and certainly our, our, the way we do our job. Our job is busier than it ever has been. But every month, alarm calls is one of our leading top five calls, and most of those are false alarms. Last year, there were three thousand five hundred and ninety-nine false burglar alarms. That equates to about ten point seven weeks of wasted law enforcement time. If you figure thirty minutes for a typical call, an officer drives there, gets there, and the majority of these, there's no key holder available, which means nobody even shows up. Nobody even gets there to make sure that the alarm is shut off, that everything's okay. So what we've submitted for your review and consideration is to increase the alarm permit fee from ten dollars to thirty. Increase the alarm permit renewal fee from five dollars to fifteen. Increase the fee for failure to respond to an activated alarm from twenty-five dollars to forty. This is not a lot. Increase the false alarm fee from twenty-five dollars to forty per violation. And increase the reinstatement fee of a revoked alarm permit from a hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty. And that's all spelled out in the, what you've got in front of you there, the ordinance.
And we would like to start assessing fees instead of after the fifth time after the third. So it would, yeah, it'd be, it would begin with the third. So you get two free passes, and then we start charging you. That's a really, it's a huge impact on our police force. And if you think about what else they could be doing, because our officers don't know if it's a real, real need or not, so they have to show up. We can't not show up. And, and so that, that's kind of what we wanted to see your thoughts.
We treat every one of them like it's the real deal, because you never know, and it could be.
And I've had a false alarm at my house. And one of the kids, they were home alone, and they set the alarm, and then they walked outside, and they didn't know the alarm was going on. And, you know, three police officers show up, because they don't know.
That's one, for sure.
It was just one. That was just one. But, you know, you want that kind of service, but if you're, and I think what we've talked about is a lot of these are repeat offenders, especially in the commercial district where.
They're fine to have us just check it every once in a while. And sometimes, we wonder if they're set off on purpose, just to get us to check it. So.
I've got a question.
Alderman Potts, and I'll get Alderman Berger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just a quick question in reference to what you said. It's been since two thousand nine since we have actually looked at these rates. Do we know how we compare to other municipalities that are in our area, or maybe of our same size?
Well, what we're asking is a little bit higher, I think, than some of our surrounding areas. But at the same time, I don't think that they have the number of calls that we have. One of the other issues we get, you, sometimes you have to test your alarm before you move into your new business, and they forget to call and tell us that it's a test. And that happens all the time. And we still have to treat it like an actual burglary process, or, you know, someone trying to break in. And that happens all the time. They just don't call. And I think that's different here than, and I also think there are more people here that utilize alarm services than maybe other, other places.
I will speak to that, though. It's on par with Murfreesboro and Columbia. It's a little bit, a little bit less, but right on par.
Alderman Berger.
Okay.
And then I'll get you, Alderman.
I don't have a problem with all the fees, except I don't get why we're going, jumping from five to fifteen for the renewal, because nobody's violated anything. It's just, you're renewing it.
There is a lot of admin time and, and just typing it in, putting it, it's like in, it is treated a little bit, it is kind of like a new, a new alarm.
Don't you just say renew?
I don't know. Our system doesn't.
Why do you have to write down the information?
We also entered it in with communications, the county, uh, emergency communications.
If they're renewing it, they already have that.
Unless they've changed the information, and there's different people, different owners, different phone numbers. Give us a phone number.
And since two thousand nine, we have increased salaries of our employees who are doing this.
Yeah, it doesn't cover the cost of what we're doing.
I just, I, I'm just not in favor of raising it fifteen. The other thing is, the failure to respond, if somebody's out of town on vacation and their phone says their alarm's going off, they wouldn't know if it was somebody breaking into the house, or the alarm just went off because a bird hit the window or something crazy happened. How do we, how do we do that? I mean, how do we, you know, if you, if you're in pango, pango, and you can't respond, uh, the alarm goes off, maybe you set.
You can at least respond to a phone call.
Maybe, what?
You could at least respond to a phone call.
Yeah, you could.
And some, many of them don't.
And, and you remember, you get two for free.
My, my alarm system, my people will call me, and I will say, I don't know.
Are you gonna be in tango, tango?
In pango, pango, I don't know.
One for you.
So, I don't know. Hey, I'm, I'm legit. But I don't know, I'm, I'm remote, so I don't know if it's, there's any problem. So maybe we set it up with the neighbor or something?
And maybe that's not a false alarm. I mean, if you don't know.
Yeah. I'm not gonna get charged for a false, for a, for a burglar, if it's real.
Some of them don't even give us a phone number, a cell phone number, to, to call them and say, look, we're at your home.
So how do they get a permit? That's our problem.
They just sign up and give us five bucks. That's it.
Does it reset every year?
But they don't give us everything. Yeah, you have to renew every year.
If they sign up, they have to have a number.
I'm sorry.
That's part of the application.
Yeah, you should. They don't respond.
Thank you, Mayor. They don't answer the phone.
I think the only thing I would say is that, you know, is that I have no problem increasing these. I think making sure we're, we're, the, the cost we're incurring as a police off, uh, department is, is covered by this, but not, I mean, I have no way of knowing if this is too much, not enough. I mean, I have, I have no idea. I'm, we're trusting that, that you've done the math, that the actual cost that we're incurring.
It doesn't touch an officer's time. No.
Well, you, ten, ten weeks, you just said ten weeks at seven.
Three thousand five hundred and ninety-nine false calls.
Right.
Time's like thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes. Charge of per figure is about almost eleven, waste of our time.
Eleven weeks of, of an officer's time. And then you know what an, what, to take the highest officers pay. And that's still, if you do the math of, anyway, just, I don't, it feels a little high, but, but I think you understand what I'm saying, is I'd rather, rather not overcharge, but wanna make sure that our costs are taken care of. I guess the math that came into these numbers, like, why was it, how did you come up with it?
And that's what Alderman Baggett's talking about. And then Chief, what you just said a moment ago, is that we're operating this as a deficit.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that.
I don't wanna do that at all.
No.
So I just wanna make sure these numbers are right.
But when we did the math, we kind of thought, if we really told you how much it costs, I don't know that people would wanna actually pay that, because it would be more than, uh, more than this.
Actually, but it'd be good for us to know. I mean, because then it's like, oh, yeah, this is, yeah, a no-brainer.
We can get the average hourly rate of an officer.
I think that would be important. I'm supportive. Don't hear me say I'm not supportive. I think, but as our constituents get their renewal bills, I'd like to be armed with some information that, oh, yeah, well, we, actually, it costs us double.
We can give you that. Yeah.
And deciding to use an alarm system service is, is a choice that we make as homeowners. Some people don't do that. I mean, it's just, yeah, it's a choice.
Any other business for this group? We'll see you at seven o'clock.